Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of June 6th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 13th and is also available for streaming on the Shrewsbury Media Connections website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. The first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. Those wishing to do so should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. Tonight, Mr. Brian Moss has requested to address the committee and we will hear from him at this time. Mr. Moss?
Great, thanks. Brian Moss, 16, Ruthencircle. So, I just wanted to note that I'm speaking only on my behalf about my own opinions and concerns and not on behalf of any other person in the group. With the artificial turf groundbreaking earlier this week, Shrewsbury is now moving forward to install a nearly million-dollar investment in plastic that will bring hundreds of thousands of pounds of plastic in contact with our students, athletes, and our drinking water supply over the next several decades. At a time when plastic pollution and climate change are urgent and rising, public health threats to our children, families, and communities, Shrewsbury will have to deal with this plastic legacy for the next half a century. The plastic field is made out of fossil fuels that by themselves have extreme exploitive and extractive impacts to communities from where they are sourced and contribute to climate change. And the plastic field will be generating hundreds of thousands of pounds of plastic waste every decade over and over again with no end in sight. The plastic field is in direct opposition to the bold actions and solutions today's youth now expect from those in leadership positions that make policy decisions like this. It is unfortunate that Shrewsbury has gone down this plastic path when a safer and lower-cost alternative in high-use natural grass fields that are organically managed is available. This summer, the turf company will profit while the citizens of Shrewsbury will prepare to burden all of the risks that the turf company leaves behind in its wake. Our risk, their reward. If, as you have stated, there is no risk to our drinking water, then why not ask the turf companies to provide a written guarantee that the plastic field will not affect our drinking water? And why not ask them to agree in writing to be financially responsible to pay for the cleanup of any drinking water issues that may occur from the fields in the future? If Shrewsbury wants to learn from the past, notice how Shrewsbury taxpayers are the ones that are dealing with the hex- paying and dealing with the hexamelan chromium in our drinking water and not the company that caused the problem decades ago. A lesson is to be learned from how those that sell us these products externalize all of the costs and future risks. If, as you have stated, there is no risk to our students and athletes from exposure to the plastic turf and silica sand dust, for example, up to 30% of the Envirofil plastic may be expected to wear off according to its warranty, then why not ask the turf companies to provide a written guarantee that the plastic field will not negatively affect the health of the students and athletes? And why not ask them to agree in writing to be financially responsible to compensate any medical problems that may arise down the road from kids inhaling the plastic dust, microplastics, and plastic-related chemicals? Hopefully, you can get those written guarantees from the turf companies, but if not, then I would ask the school committee to provide the source of the guarantees that were made to town meeting members last year, specifically that there is no increased health risk to our students and that there are no environmental risks with installation of this turf field. Additionally, now that the plastic field is being installed, what are the school committee's plans this summer for the operational procedures around the following? Plans for monitoring heat to avoid heat stress, GMAX testing to avoid injuries, disinfecting to reduce infection risk, monitoring students' exposure to chemicals, monitoring field water runoff, monitoring the towns' drinking water for microplastics and associated chemicals, and monitoring the finances for the future carpet replacement, including the education of those concerns so that parents are educated about them. Thank you, and please feel free to ask me questions.
Do you have any written materials for the committee, Mr. Moss?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And just as a courtesy, as I mentioned last time, the school committee does not intend to revisit this decision.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Members, anything to report? Mr. Wensky?
I just want to mention, I had a chance yesterday to attend the groundbreaking of the Shrewsbury High School Athletic Field Project that we kicked off yesterday. Just like to congratulate everybody involved, leadership, fundraising committee. I know it's an exciting time for our student athletes in the town, so thank you to all involved.
Wonderful event. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Mr. Collins and I traveled along with Mr. Mizikar, the town manager, into Boston this morning along with our architects and project manager for the B.O. Building Project. We had a very successful meeting with the Facility Subcommittee of the Mass School Building Authority regarding the submissions that have been made to date regarding that project. We had very positive feedback. They actually stated that the educational plan that we submitted, that Ms. Cloder authored and with a lot of support and information from various administrators from across the district, was one of, if not the best they've ever seen, which was very gratifying for me to hear as superintendent and wanted to thank Ms. Cloder and the leadership team for that work. Our architects, project managers continued a good job and it's a very positive start with the MSBA as we begin moving forward further with that project into schematic design. Also want to recognize that we had a group of students from Shrewsbury High School, representing Shrewsbury High School, part of our Destination Imagination Program, who attended the Global Finals. They qualified with the state tournament here in Massachusetts and they actually went to the globals in Knoxville, Tennessee, where they won. They came in first place out of over 63 teams, or 67 teams, rather, from around the world. So, congratulations to freshman Abiya Hassan, Diala Berah, Divya Ragunathan, and Sneha Ramesh, Ramesh, rather, and who were awarded first place in the Inside Impact Service Learning Project and will hope that they will be able to join us at some point and share more about their performance and project with you. Congratulations on that championship. Also want to recognize that our Student Council at Shrewsbury High School was recently recognized as a 2018 National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Student Council Association. This is for their exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities, and this is essentially the highest recognition that student councils can get from that national organization. Well-earned and congratulations to our student government members for getting that recognition. Further successes with students, the Theater at the Mount at Mount Wachusett Community College conducts its annual TAMI Awards for local high school musicals in central and eastern Massachusetts. For the second time in three years, Shrewsbury High School won Best Overall Production, which is the highest honor given. This was for their, this past spring's musical, in terms of the, called All Shook Up. They also won the Technical Excellence Award and the Stage Crew Award. Ally Urie won the Best Supporting Actress, Sophie Silvareo won an award for Outstanding Chorus Member. And I was also informed that each time a school wins the Best Overall Production that Mount Wachusett actually gives a scholarship to a student from that high school. I mean, both two years ago as well as this year, a graduating senior who's going to Mount Wachusett Community College is receiving a scholarship as a result of this honor. So, congratulations to everyone associated with our high school musical this year. Along those same lines, congratulations to the students at Oak Middle School for their excellent performance of Guys and Dolls this past weekend, which was an outstanding performance in production. And then finally, most of you know that last week, the Shrewsbury High School class of 2018, some of whom are here in the audience today who'll be presenting, had a very successful commemoration and graduation and they ended a very successful preschool through grade 12 career here with us in the school district with two, what I thought, ceremonies that had a lot of class and congratulate them and wish them well as they move forward to bigger and better things beyond Shrewsbury High School. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment, student recognition, the SHS TV production, Leading the Nation video. Leading the Nation is a statewide celebration in which Massachusetts public schools and local communities showcase their students' academic and creative successes. As part of this celebration, school districts were invited to participate in a contest to create a one-minute, student-made video that highlights student success in the district. Shrewsbury Public Schools video was selected as one of the four that was featured in April at the Leading the Nation event at the State House in Boston. And we'll be joined now by a team of students and staff who created the video to talk about their experiences. So, if you guys want to come forward to the table and introduce yourselves.
Evening. My name is Archana Perohit.
My name is Sarah Blowey.
My name is Dua Ahmed.
I'm Tim Schwab.
And I'm Drew Highland.
Earlier this year, Dr. Sawyer approached us with the idea of submitting a video entry to the Leading the Nation contest. Leading the Nation was an event that would take place in April at the Massachusetts State House in Boston showcasing the successes of the Massachusetts education system. The winners of the contest would have their videos shown at the event. Naturally, we were thrilled when Dr. Sawyer asked us to put together a video for this contest. The video couldn't exceed one minute and had to include all of Shrewsbury Public Schools' unique opportunities. We would like to show the video we created before continuing.
Thank you, good afternoon, applause.
I know. So, when we took up the project, we knew we would face challenges in terms of the time limit, the content, communicating between all the schools, and reviewing and editing all of our footage together at the end. Our background in previous projects in the educational television studio at the high school helped us greatly in accomplishing the necessary tasks, and we would like to share with you the process of putting together the video, the challenges we faced, and how we overcame them. Before we go any further, I'm going to give a brief background into the TV studio. The educational television studio is a very important part of many high school students' experience. I myself have been a student in the educational TV studio since my sophomore year, making me a three-year student. The TV studio is unique in the sense that students can express themselves in a variety of ways when storytelling. However, there are similarities between most pieces. To tell an effective story through a video, you have to use both audio and visual components to their full potential. If the product is not both engaging to listen to or watch, then it has failed as a video. While most of our LTN project is visual, with statistics, pictures, words, and videos, we put just as much time into the audio section as well. A one-minute video such as this may seem to be a simple task, but runtime isn't a good indicator of difficulty involved in producing such a piece. We were forced to apply many of the skills we have learned throughout the year, such as time management, consensus building, management skills, and leadership skills. We not only have a deadline to meet, but also a team counting on us to get all of our portions done. The best teams have good communication with each other. Everyone should know the expectations of what the video will look like and be comfortable to share their own ideas and reservations. Luckily for us, our group has been working together since the beginning of this year, so we all felt comfortable with each other's strengths and weaknesses. When we were first approached with the piece, a couple of our team members met with Dr. Sawyer to understand his expectations and what was to be included in the video. During the meeting, we came up with a basic list of what absolutely had to be in the video, which made it easier for us in the future because it allowed us to structure the rest of the video around the vital parts. Right after Dr. Sawyer appointed us the task, we decided we needed to figure out what kind of approach to take. Did we want the video to be rigid in its format or more lively? We bounced numerous ideas off of each other for a few days. We drew countless flow charts and diagrams and listed off tons of academic statistics, clubs, and sports that we wanted to include. The initial brainstorming process left us with endless directions that we could take the video in. So, our next move followed a common piece of advice that our TV teacher, Ms. Korab, often gives us. We decided to gather as much footage as we could first and then decide what to use in the video later. And in order to get all the footage that we needed, we knew we were going to have to take a little field trip.
The field trip was scheduled for February 15th, the Thursday before February break. Ms. Korab had emailed all the Shrewsbury Public Schools in order to see if any teachers had planned visually interesting class activities, specifically those based off project-based learning for that day. For example, at Floral Street School, the elementary school teacher, Ms. Frankiean, had a nature walk scheduled for her class, so that was helpful. I was the only one with a car, so apart from Oak and Sherwood, our group could only visit one school at a time. And since we had seven schools to visit and only one day to film, we could only spend like 30 to 45 minutes at each building before packing up our equipment and heading to the next location. Once we did arrive to each school, we split up into groups. This allowed us to capture as much footage around the building as possible before we had to leave, and the plan worked quite well. And by the time we had finished everything, we had over 300 clips at our disposal.
But before we could even begin cutting and stringing together our clips, we needed to find the music that we would be using. This was critical to do first because music provides a tone for the video, but it also makes the editing process go much smoother. This is because music creates a rhythm to edit to, and when it transitions to another measure or changes instruments, tone, volume, speed, et cetera, we can cut to a new clip. And using music as the core template, it makes the video look more professional and cleaner. As for the music piece, we actually chose, we wanted the LTN video to represent every, every aspect of the LTN video was to represent Shrewsbury Public Schools, and that meant even the music had to do this. And so, we, after contacting music director Mr. O'Toole, we decided to have the Shrewsbury Public Schools, the Shrewsbury High School's orchestra to do St. Paul's Suite. Unfortunately, this piece is 10 minutes long, so we had to choose a small segment of one of the four movements of the piece, and this proved to be extraordinarily difficult as we wanted to start with something that sounded like a natural opening but still build to something that would display the orchestra's incredible talents. And to complicate things further, it still had to be one minute long. This meant that we had to splice and combine multiple sections together while still ensuring that it flowed as seamlessly as possible. It took a lot of trial and error, but we were able to create about a 50-second version of the song that we were happy with, and from that point, we just had to edit to the beat.
The editing process was probably the most rigorous part of the whole project. We had over 300 clips, as previously mentioned, and only one minute to capture the essence of Shrewsbury Public Schools. Sorting these clips proved to be a challenge as we had to decide which ones best represented our school system. And then from there, we had to sort them into which quality we felt that each clip best represented. This part alone, without editing, took multiple hours. We also spent hours creating diagrams and charts of statistics that would help visualize the academic success Shrewsbury Public Schools has had in terms of standardized testing and sports. We originally wanted to interject audio clips or sound bites of students and faculty talking about what Shrewsbury Public Schools means to them or what they like most about the school system. We had plenty of interviews to choose from, but due to the strict time constraints of creating the video as well as the time constraints of the video's format, we regretfully had to leave these as well as some other great footage that we collected. As for the actual assembly process, we spent time in and out of class as a group, gathering clips, lining up the footage with music, and trying to squeeze in as much information as possible. The final day, when the piece was due at 5:00, part of our group stayed after school, working on the project until 4:30, adding finishing touches and combing through the piece to make sure we hadn't missed anything.
A challenge like this video requires a lot of thought, planning, vision, teamwork, dedication, and artwork. Although it was difficult at times, we thoroughly enjoyed putting together this video, and we would like to thank Dr. Sawyer a lot for giving us this opportunity. We appreciate you guys listening to this presentation.
Thank you. Colleagues, comments or questions? Dr. McGee?
This is just absolutely terrific. Best minute in Shrewsbury Publications and everything. I think we spend so much value when we come up with these charts that show per pupil expense or various other MCAS scores and the like, but in a minute, you transmit all of that with energy and positivity and everything, and it's wonderful. What an incredible job.
Thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Fritz?
Again, I think it was really well done. You know, from a marketing, you know, how are we portraying ourselves if we have a product? How do you want someone to know that really quickly what that is? In watching this, I knew it immediately. Even if I didn't live in this district, I would understand what you wanted to portray. And I think here in high school, I think people get paid big bucks to do marketing and they don't hit the target like you guys did. So, really, really well done.
I do have a question. When you went, you know, you got invited, how, what was the judging panel like to determine? Who was it made up of? Do you guys even know?
Um, we're not really sure. I'm the president and we were told that we would hear back by a certain date if we had been chosen to-
You made it to that level, yeah.
Yeah. And we originally thought that we didn't make it, but later we were contacted and we were all pretty excited to hear that our video was being chosen to be shown at the State House.
Really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Wensky?
Yes, congratulations and a great presentation. This is a well-deserved honor based on, you know, the sample that everyone saw, but I think it's just a sample of what you all do at the studio. I had the opportunity to visit you a few times this year, and the students are so engaged and really have a passion for what they do. And Maggie Korab and the team do great work up there, so congratulations.
Mrs. Fritz?
And thank you to Mrs. Korab because I know you put a lot of effort in. My son gave Mrs. Korab a lot of gray hair. So, I think it's one of those situations where, you know, I don't know how many schools have television studios like we do locally, but I think it's a gem and it's something, you know, my son works in marketing and communication in a sports industry because he started in that television studio and got a passion for that whole piece. So, I think it's a great, great thing, and thank you, Mrs. Korab.
Thank you, guys. Every aspect of what you presented to us tonight is exceptionally complex, but I think to echo what Dr. McGee said, I think the hardest task you probably had was distilling it down to 60 seconds. I don't think I could do that verbally, let alone with an entire video, but you made one that was award-winning, so kudos. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
This, this may have been the best decision I made all year.
Yeah.
We had been asked by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to participate in this Leading the Nation in some way, and then we came across the video piece, and knowing what a quality program we have at the high school, I asked Ms. Korab, and, you know, they were already very busy in the studio making the senior video and a whole bunch of other things, but she said, "I think I have a team that would be great for it" and invited me to come up and meet with them. And the rest is history. They did an outstanding job. We're featuring the video on our website. I'm actually, Ms. Malone and I, when we are meeting with candidates in their final stage before I actually make them an offer to appoint them as an educator in Shrewsbury Public Schools, we've incorporated this into what we do. We talk about what our district is about, so we're using it with all of our new educators. And it's something that the Commissioner of Education, who was actually sworn in, Commissioner Riley, at the event that they attended at the State House with Mr. Bzidlo and myself, is actually coming to visit the high school on Friday to thank them in person and learn a little bit about how the video was made. So, we are, they brought great prestige to the school districts in Shrewsbury High School through this work. And as Ms. Fritz referenced, and what I've been telling the new staff when we show it is that, you know, if we paid someone to do that, I'd be pretty happy with the product. And the fact that our students did this just blows people away. So, we'll continue to feature it. And hearing that there's some other footage, I think we'll probably get another team next year maybe to do something with all those outtakes, that there's more there to be had, which is, which is great. But again, congratulations and well done. And one last quick thing, actually, before we have you come up and shake hands and get certificates. The equipment in the studio recently had a very important upgrade, and that was only due to the fact that we had funding in the Colonial Fund to provide that. So, for those donors who have either participated in the Rhodes Scholars Race or made donations during our annual appeal or participated in the farmers' market in the fall, without those funds, it was not part of our regular budget to be able to do that kind of upgrade and do the kind of digital editing and that, I'm sure, went into making this video. So, we're really, without the resources, we can't provide opportunities for kids like this. And I'm thrilled that these five students were able to take advantage of it and bring so much to the district as a result. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Korab. And if the students would come up and shake the hands of the committee, and we have some certificates for you.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Good job.
Well done.
Good work on the video and the presentation.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Fantastic.
Way to go. Congrats. Excellent job.
Congratulations.
Oh, my goodness.
The Honey Bears Summer Award Show at the end of the, end of the year where we get awards for all our pieces, and this one goes, Mr. Wensky, the voice of ETS.
I think they're downloaded as PowerPoints if I'm not mistaken on the desktop there.
What, who's out of that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Fitz, honey, you have to share it with all of us, Mr. Wensky.
Keep it here for the remainder of the year.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is another item of student recognition, the SHS Robotics Team. This was a very successful season for our first robotics competition
Yeah, no, the one on the desktop that they use for the Chairman's Award is different format. I have, I have a backup.
Team 467, the Colonials. They attended two qualifying competitions at WPI in Connecticut,
All right.
I'll load the backup.
Maybe actually while we're getting that set up, do our students want to maybe go winning a District Chairman's Award and a Creativity Award and also receiving runner-up for the Safety Award. As a result, the team was invited to attend the District Championship in Boston where they did very well, and also won a Regional Chairman's Award, earning them a place at the championship in Detroit. And we are going to hear from the team now. So, if you guys want to come on up and introduce yourselves. down the line and introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
I'm Rhea.
I'm Niall.
I'm Sarah.
I'm Niall.
I'm Jasmine.
I'm Sean.
I'm Ashen.
Welcome.
Have you got?
Yeah, good to go.
Excellent.
Good evening. I would like to begin by thanking you all for allowing us to speak with you this evening and for giving us the opportunity to talk about our season. But first, I would like to give you guys just a brief overview of First Robotics. First is an acronym, which means for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. This global program offers hands-on learning experiences to students ages 6 to 18. This school year marked our 19th year as a team, and as was mentioned earlier, we won a number of awards this season, including the Creativity Award for Robot Design at a district qualifier and the Chairman's Award, which we won twice, once at a district qualifier and once at the district championship, which earned us a spot at the World Championship in Detroit, which was a huge honor for us, and we're extremely proud of this achievement.
So, the Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award in First. It's given to the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate, as well as best embodies the goals and purposes of First. So, the goal of the First Robotics Competition is to spread-
Alright, guys. You got? Yeah, good to go.
Excellent.
Good evening. I would like to begin by thanking you all for allowing us to speak with you this evening and for giving us the opportunity to talk about our season. But first, I would like to give you guys just a brief overview of First Robotics. FIRST is an acronym which means for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. This global program offers hands-on learning experiences to students ages six to eighteen. This school year marked our nineteenth year as a team. And as was mentioned earlier, we won a number of awards this season, including the Creativity Award for Robot Design at a district qualifier and the Chairman's Award, which we won twice, once at a district qualifier and once at the district championship, which earned us a spot at the World Championship in Detroit, which was a huge honor for us and we're extremely proud of this achievement.
So, the Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award in FIRST. It's given to the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate, as well as best embodies the goals and purposes of FIRST. So, the goal of the FIRST Robotics Competition is to spread science and technology and to encourage today's youth to enter STEM-related fields. So now, our Chairman's Presentation Team will present to you in the same manner as they would at competition.
Coming up on our twentieth year, we would like to take this opportunity to look back at our continuously growing influence and our plan for the future of 467.
As part of what we are now calling our SOAR initiative, sharing our advancements in robotics, we have outlined the four levels of impact that Team 467 has worked to achieve.
Since 1999, we have expanded from our small shop into the communities of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, and even the world.
A bird's eye view of our team allows us to see just how far our efforts have reached.
Um, our first level of influence is our team. Team 467 is proud to announce a record one hundred and nine active members this year and a steady increase from eight girls in 2012 to the current twenty-one.
467 is truly a family. We share meals together five times a week, allowing students of different backgrounds to share their culture through cuisine. We further our bonds by planning group activities such as going ice skating and playing ultimate frisbee.
Our sponsors and mentors provide us with the necessary materials, funds, and advice. And their dedication and effort year-round pushes us to the best of our abilities.
Our next level of impact is our community. We participate in a wide range of Shrewsbury events over the course of the year, like this Spirit of Shrewsbury Festival in Bray, where we allow the community to interact with our team and robot.
At the festival, we host the Fall Family Carnival to raise money for Parker Road Preschool, who we also volunteer within the spring.
Team 467 also gains visibility through multiple appearances on our local TV network, whether this be through interviews with team members or through student-made productions from our school's TV studio.
This year, we really focused our energy on spreading STEM to more young girls. We have two Girl Scout troops earn two STEM-related badges, designer robot and woodworking.
We are proud to have initiated the Girls Workshop at our local YMCA, which stands for Girls Innovating and Recognizing Leadership in STEM. At the event, thirty-eight registered girls participated in an engineering challenge and interacted with a panel of women in STEM careers.
The constant expansion of our FIRST-related outreach is a major factor in the growth of our team. We are proud to have increased the number of FLL teams we mentor from ten to a whopping seventeen teams.
And many of our kids and Lego coaches win awards at competition. But best of all, our Lego kids form long-lasting bonds with their high school coaches that encourage them to then join our team when they reach high school.
Due to an unprecedented level of interest, we used a lottery system to place one hundred students into our program. Those that could not be accommodated were encouraged to form private teams, three of which we assisted throughout the season by offering supplies and advice.
Furthermore, we host four weeks of a STEM summer camp for students in the fourth through eighth grades from all around Central Mass. May these students come back for our competitive FLL season. This is our biggest fundraiser, bringing in a little over twenty thousand dollars.
This year, we are working with a local rookie FTC team to help them develop their sponsorship and fundraising programs. We hope to work with them in coming years to further develop our FLL and STEM summer camp programs.
Team 467 is also part of the curriculum for Shrewsbury's elementary schools. This year, we taught the engineering process in hopes of inspiring even more students to pursue STEM in their futures.
In these ways, we work hard to teach the community about FIRST and STEM year-round.
Our next level of impact is our state. Team 467 is proud to host the largest FLL qualifier in Massachusetts, Mindstorm Mayhem. We believe this is a great opportunity to broadcast the capabilities of FIRST participants to a larger audience.
For the past three years, we have invited junior FLL teams to our event, allowing them to broadcast their budding engineering talents. We hope to continue this in coming years.
This year, we've also initiated a new event, Sponsor Day, which will allow our statewide sponsors to visit our shop and see how their donations made it possible for us to compete in the 2018 season.
Our most well-known fundraiser is our pie bake, in which we congregate at our local middle school to bake over eight hundred pies in just one day. In fact, Team 467 is legally considered a bakery for Thanksgiving weekend.
These pies are sold all over the state, including our donation of sixty annually to Veterans Inc., an organization that helps combat homelessness amongst veterans.
And finally, we have our global impact. Team 467 is extremely proud of how far our influence has reached. This year, we're assisting a group of Chinese students and mentors from Shanghai in forming an FRC team to compete in the 2019 season.
These mentors met with us in our shop in mid-January to discuss tools, team structure, and build season. We've been exchanging gifts.
Our guests proposed a possible foreign exchange program in which students from our team would travel to Shanghai to exchange knowledge about STEM, while members of 467 would also serve as host families for the Chinese students here in the United States.
Team 467 has also taken advantage of social media to spread the message of STEM and FIRST globally. Our Facebook page, Humans and Robots of FIRST, is a social media platform that allows teams to share their stories with the community as well as learn from those others.
To promote FIRST safety culture, we reach out to FIRST and second-year teams all across the country. This year, we reached out to every single rookie team in New England with safety tips and advice.
Team 467 always likes to remember those less fortunate than us in the world. Each year, we participate in real-life for life. This past year, we raised thirty-five hundred dollars for the American Cancer Society.
Building off of this philosophy, we also gathered donations as a team for Puerto Rico after the devastation of Hurricane Maria.
In previous years, our team has worked with local Girl Scout troops to send paracord bracelets to troops overseas. This year, we are working with Operation Gratitude to send lifesaving paracord bracelets to our soldiers in support.
And finally, our alumni scattered across the globe serves a perfect metaphor for the impact that Team 467 and FIRST has had on the world. One hundred percent of our past two years graduating seniors have pursued STEM-related majors in college and one of our alumni is a SpaceX employee who had his signature sent into Helios CentriCorvette along with Starman.
Other alumni have developed prosthetic limbs for kids in developing countries, worked on submarines in the US Navy, and even perfected the K-Cup use this morning.
Promoting STEM and the ideals of FIRST is just as important to us as building robots. For FRC Team 467, FIRST is truly about more than engineering.
This bird's eye view of our team, from local community projects to global outreach efforts, captures the essence of who we are and the impact we will continue to have.
This concludes our Chairman's Presentation. Now, we'll hear from some of our seniors from this year about Team 467's impact on their lives.
Hi, so I've been involved with Team 467 since the age of twelve and this has given me the opportunity to be a team leader since my freshman year of high school. I have been a member of the team's student governing body for three years, as well as being a team lead on specific robot aspects for three years. And this year, I was given the additional role of Lead Systems Engineer, whose job it is to facilitate all robot functions and make sure that we're finished building on time. In 2017, I was recognized as a Dean's List finalist award recipient. This award recognizes students who are leaders on their team and embody the values of FIRST Robotics, with the hope that they will keep spreading STEM in their community long after high school. I was one of six students in New England to receive this award. And these last four years on Team 467 have really helped me grow as a leader and have given me the opportunity to develop skills that will help me in future leadership roles.
Um, so FIRST Robotics has given me the opportunity to participate in a variety of community service projects, including coaching Lego robotics for three years. And this not only impacts the kids that I've coached, but also me as well, because I've been able to form irreplaceable bonds with these kids and it's so incredible to see what they can accomplish in STEM under my guidance. And because of this, I've been further inspired to continue volunteering and promoting interest in STEM, especially for younger students.
In my past four years on the team, I've worked with all aspects of the robot and I've learned more than I ever could have in a classroom. Rather than watching a PowerPoint or trying to piece together scribbled notes in my head, I have the exciting opportunity to come to robotics and solder electronics, use real manufacturing machinery, or program with code. Not only have I been exposed to real-life aspects of engineering, but I've been able to choose what I am interested in, continuously learn by doing, and then pass on this knowledge to other eager students.
I believe I speak for many students on the robotics team when I say that going through four years of robotics really establishes how much of a role STEM plays on our future. I entered my freshman year with the expectation of making a difference in the sports industry. I wanted to be a graphic designer and work for a digital athletics department, but my experience as a lead for the scouting and strategy team really helped me figure out the future of technology and data collection in competitive firms like robotics and sports. We would now like to, you know, bring up one of our mentors to talk about the future of the team.
Good evening. My name is Tim McBrayer and I have to say, I am so proud to be able to work with these kids all year long. I'm one of about fifteen adult mentors that help run Shrewsbury Robotics and Team 467. I've been a mentor for eight years. I've had two of my daughters, my two daughters, graduate through SHS. They spent all four years in the program and they are now both studying for STEM degrees. So, next year, as I think Sarah mentioned, Team 467 will be celebrating its twentieth season. Twenty years ago, we started out of a little closet in the Old Oak High School and look where we are now. We have risen to the top tier of FIRST teams in New England. So has FIRST. There are over three thousand five hundred teams active worldwide and they all want to build a robot and they all want to compete. It's time to move Shrewsbury Robotics, the FIRST program, forward again to the next level. The program mentors and student leaders would like to actually host an FRC competition in Shrewsbury next year. The New England District Organization, NEFIRST, has already approached Team 467 about hosting a competition during the 2019 competition season and we would love to be able to do this. And there is only one logical and suitable location in Shrewsbury to hold such an event and that is the High School Fieldhouse. An FRC competition will bring forty teams from across New England to Shrewsbury. Hosting this event will showcase Team 467. It will showcase this high school and its facilities and it will also showcase our town. It will bring about one thousand five hundred people to Shrewsbury for a full weekend of robotics competition. We at Shrewsbury Robotics know that we can host such a competition. We've hosted Mindstorm Mayhem, the Lego Competition for the last eleven years. We're confident that we can organize this event, staff it, and run it successfully. So, the first step in all of this is getting permission to use the Fieldhouse. This is what I'm here to ask for on behalf of Shrewsbury Robotics. As you know, the Fieldhouse is a beautiful facility and it's the only space in town that has enough space for a competition field, for a half-court practice field, and robot pits for forty teams, all in one location. We would also be asking to use the commons for food service and a place to get away from the noise and intensity of the competition. Finally, we would want to access a few classrooms for judging. This event would require a full weekend access to these facilities in March or early April 2019. We don't need an answer tonight, but we do need to let NEFIRST know if this is even a possibility. So, they want to know as soon as possible for this upcoming year. So, thank you all for listening to my proposal and I think the kids also want to show the video that they made to go along with their Chairman's Presentation.
How does being on a FIRST team impact our students?
FIRST has brought me to one of my closest friends in high school and it's really broadened my view on engineering. Before I started FIRST, I didn't really think much of it, but now it's my entire life.
467 prepared me for my future by giving me insight into what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. The skills that I've learned here have been some of the most valuable things for me in my life.
467 has made me realize that there's a lot more to STEM than meets the eye. At first, I thought it was just a whole bunch of math and that someone like me could never fit in with people like that. And then I realized that it's actually a lot of fun.
Our team excels at writing FIRST in our community. We mentor twenty FLL teams, many of whom continue their involvement in FIRST by joining our FRC team at high school.
Um, my favorite thing about the past FLL season was working as a team.
It was nice making programs.
Since I turned FLL, I worked more on like communicating and like talking, like presentation skills.
Our team participates in the Spirit of Shrewsbury Festival, where we showcase our robot to the community and walk in the parade. We run a four-week STEM summer camp for students from the community to introduce them to FLL and engineering. This year, our team worked with local Girl Scouts to help them earn two STEM-related badges. We organized a workshop for young girls with our local YMCA, where students participated in an engineering challenge and interacted with a panel of women in STEM careers. Our team bakes eight hundred pies in one day. In fact, we are legally considered a bakery for Thanksgiving weekend. We donate sixty of these pies to Veterans Inc. and Western. We host the largest FLL qualifier in Massachusetts, Mindstorm Mayhem. Our team impacts the world. We are assisting a team in Shanghai with transitioning from VEX to FRC Robotics for the 2019 season. We gathered donations for Puerto Rico after the devastation of Hurricane Maria.
If I was to give advice to anyone pursuing or considering joining a FIRST team, I would say, "Just do it."
It's totally worth it. You make so many friends and you have such a good time and you learn so much. I think I've learned more in one season of robotics than I have in a year at school, honestly.
We are Team 467, the Colonials.
Alright, and in conclusion, being on Team 467 has left us with so much more than we could have imagined, from life skills to lifelong friends. Along with being on this FIRST team, we are left with a sense of pride. Pride in being part of a team, pride in contributing to this community, and pride in being a Shrewsbury Colonial. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Wow.
Colleagues, questions, comments? Mrs. Kozadoff?
I'm just astounded. I had no idea the amount and level of detail that goes into the work that you do. But in addition, all of this community service, I knew about the pies. I've had them. They're wonderful. And so, but I had no idea that the work you did at Parker Road, helping with Hurricane Maria, it just, it's phenomenal. I'm so, so proud of all of the work that you've done. And I've always wondered about the Chairman's Award. I've heard that bandied about, that term, and to learn the prestige that goes along with that award tonight. Congratulations and well done.
This is Fritz.
I think we just had this professional-level marketing commercial. And then you have this like high-level business model that other companies would envy, just the way you presented it, how you laid it out. Really well done for high school students. And I think, you know, your proposal, you're looking at future plans. I would be happy, I think we should look at some type of written proposal to see what you're planning and what you're looking forward to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Wensky.
You know, you hear about robotics and you often think about the activity, the interest, the passion that students have in that, in that organization and the school. But you don't realize, and I thought was just really well showcased, the other areas that you develop in, whether it be community service, you know, leadership opportunities, public speaking, presentation skills. It's just great to see how this group operates. Very impressive, so congratulations.
I am bowled over. I think this is just an astounding program. You all do so many incredibly impressive things, although I have had the chance to see throughout the community and I want to thank you for the work that you do above and beyond robotics itself. I've seen you guys at Spirit of Shrewsbury. I've seen you at the indoor farmers market. You are everywhere in the community and it's noticed and appreciated. And yes, those pies are delicious. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Outstanding presentation and congratulations on a wonderful season. You've made your community extremely proud. I certainly want to recognize and thank Carol McCanally, who's the lead coach and advisor to the program. Thank you, not only to Mr. McBrayer, but to all the different mentors who support and all the sponsors who support the team. In terms of FIRST Robotics and also FIRST Lego League or FLL, I was going to say, I think it's one of the best things that's happened in United States education over probably the last fifty years. But it might be one of the best things to happen to America in the last fifty years. And I, I mean that very sincerely because if you wanted to design something that was actually going to provide opportunities for young people to do the kinds of things that you just demonstrated, and whether or not that's the critical need for people to go into STEM fields and as well as regardless of whether a student goes into a STEM field, the kinds of leadership opportunities, the kinds of service opportunities, the way to polish your skill set in a way that any business would want to see. And the fact that, what was the number, over three hundred and fifty thousand students? Was that the number I saw you presenting who are participating this year? Teams, so I mean, think about, think about how many thousand individuals. It's really remarkable. And one of the things that I'm particularly excited about is that both our, the strategic plan that we just finished and the one that we just embarked upon really is about trying to create more learning opportunities in our schools that very much resemble what you're doing in FIRST Robotics. Project-based learning, hands-on, active, ways for students to participate in quote-unquote "real-world experiences." And what I'm seeing with our approach to the new science standards at the elementary level, what I'm seeing with project-based learning across the district, I'm seeing more of this happening in school because you shouldn't have to be outside of regular school to get these kinds of experiences. And so, you're really leading the way and pioneering that across our community. So, thank you for that. And as far as the proposal for the competition, I know Mr. Bzidlo's here this evening. He and I will certainly review whatever it is that... and I will certainly review whatever it is that the details are of that, and you know, it's always our inclination to try to use our school facilities for the benefit of our students and to try to host different kinds of things where we can, and you know, so we'll certainly give it every consideration and appreciate the request. But again, congratulations, and you know, again, the chairman's award is the most prestigious that exists in this organization, and I know that our team has won it, what is it, how many times, Carol, now?
They've got it at the district level twice, sort of regional level, and three times qualifying.
Yeah, so that is just remarkable, remarkable track record, and we're very, very proud of everyone involved, so congratulations. We do have some certificates for the students, and so if you'd like to come up and shake the hands of the committee, and again, bravo, well done.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Good job, Sean.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job. Great job. Great job. Great job.
Great job.
Thank you. That's for you.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you. Congratulations. Nice job.
Congratulations. Well done.
Nice, double dipping. Nice.
Way to go.
Great job. Nice presentation. Way to go.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment with State Senator Michael Moore. Senator Moore represents Shrewsbury and seven other municipalities in the Massachusetts Senate, and visits us on an annual basis to provide us an update on what he's working on on Beacon Hill. So Senator, welcome. Thank you for taking the time, and thanks for speaking to us.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me here tonight and for allowing me to see those two presentations. They were great. I think that's a great example of how wonderful the school, Shrewsbury School system is and the type of students you are sending out into the world and to colleges, and hopefully coming back to be our leaders in the future. So, thank you. I am here to go over the budget. It's the first time I've ever been here at the end when the Senate has actually released their budget, and I am happy to say that in the governor's budget, the total overall spending for Chapter Seventy was four billion, four point eight five, four point eight six five billion, which reflected a two-point-eighteen percent increase over fiscal year 2018. The Senate funded Chapter Seventy at four point ninety-one billion dollars. So we increased the funding over the amount that the governor proposed. The increase that the Senate applied to that also factored in the, an attempt to continue the phase-in of the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. We looked at factoring in the health insurance increase costs in health insurance, the rate factor into the foundation budget for English-language learners, and we also included additional funding into the Chapter Seventy for districts educating low-income students and to allow students, allow school districts to more adequately count these students. We also included in the budget for schools, for the school breakfast program, four point seven million dollars. The Senate also fully funded, and I do know this is at the seventy-five percent, we fully funded our obligation at the three hundred nineteen million, three hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars, so that's a full seventy-five percent. We also provided another hundred million dollars to reimburse school districts for the students that leave to go to charter schools. This reflects the sixth year, six-year high in the reimbursement account and is a fifty-nine percent reimbursement rate. The per-pupil minimum funding, the governor recommended twenty dollars per pupil. The legislature, the House and Senate posted, both did thirty dollars per pupil. So the total overall Chapter Seventy funding for the Senate budget is nineteen million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The difference between the Senate and the governor's budget, the Senate provided sixty thousand dollars more to the town of Shrewsbury, and the difference between last year and this year is a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Any questions that you have, I would be glad to answer.
Sure. So I know, to start off with, obviously there was some exciting activity on the House side this week with regard to the transfer or the sale of the Galavine property to the town of Shrewsbury, which is of course essential for our designs on building another K through four elementary school. Wondering if you've had any conversations on the Senate side, if you have a sense of how quickly we might be able to get that through on your side of the building?
As you know, we just finished the budget, and we are currently going into session tomorrow to discuss the extreme risk prevention order legislation, dealing with firearms, but the House, forty-three twelve, was engrossed by the House last week, and we did send a request to Ways and Means today, asking for the release of that bill, so hopefully I will get something, or some sort of response early next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. Colleagues, questions, comments? Mrs. Fritz?
Thank you again for everything that you do. I know you do help support our mission, and just echoing what Jason said, I think for me, that's our biggest issue right now, making sure that we get this pushed through so that we can keep on our timeline to get this building passed through the town and then start to be building, so I'd ask for that to be a priority.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues?
Just one other item I know that the House has also passed, both the House and the Senate passed some version of civics education, where they have some differences that are going to be reconciled in conference committee.
You would prefer they have the House language?
I think we're a little bit more comfortable with the House language, to the extent that you'd be willing to advocate in conference committee for the House version. I know we would certainly appreciate that as well.
Okay.
And just my thanks and the thanks from the committee. I know, like Representative Kane, you are extremely responsive to us and our many-and-sundered needs at all times, so we just appreciate your responsiveness and your willingness to continuously elevate all of our issues right to the top of the priority list, so thank you for that.
Mr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Thank you. Similarly, anytime I've ever reached out to Senator Moore in his office, they've always been extremely responsive, and that's very much appreciated. One thing I do want to specifically thank before Senator is your ongoing support of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. I know the Senate did move those forward. I know that there is potentially a bill coming up in the House. We'll see what happens with that on that side of, as we go through the rest of the session, but the recognition that the funding formula for Chapter Seventy needs to be updated, that districts, especially some of the districts that have more socioeconomic challenges than we do, but really across the board, the funding formula's not working the way it was intended when it was written in the early nineteen nineties, and so modernizing that, I recognize, getting the revenue to be able to fund that properly is certainly a challenge, given all the other challenges, but continuing to push press forward on that is something that I think benefits not only all the school districts across the Commonwealth, but certainly allows us to not get into a situation where school districts, even though the economy is very strong, school districts struggling to maintain staffing and maintain programming as a result of some of the issues that are associated with that. So appreciate your support with that, as always, and again, the responsiveness and the ability for us to reach out on different issues is much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your field today, yesterday, the ceremony.
Yes, thank you.
And also, we actually, we did get an update today on the referendum questions, and this does tie into our funding for education. There are several referendums going through the ballot this November. One of them is the fee share tax or the millionaire's tax. Another is the reduction in sales tax, and another is the paid leave referendum. Right now, the way the referendums work, we have until July second to work out a compromise with the sponsors of these referendums. If we can work out a compromise to have legislation filed, that's preferably, because preferable then we can have legislation, at least that's based on compromise and have the input of the legislature. If we can't get it resolved by the second, it then goes to the ballot. The millionaire's tax that will be going to the ballot currently right now would affect thirteen to fourteen thousand people, would bring in about one point nine billion dollars. It is earmarked towards education and transportation, but there is also a sales tax reduction referendum that would basically cut revenues to the Commonwealth by about one point two to one point three billion dollars. The net gain is about six hundred million dollars if they were both to pass. And then we have the earned leave. The reason I bring that up is that we were told today that they are hoping that they may have a compromise with that, with those three, so if that's the case, then obviously if the fee share were to go to the ballot, that would be additional revenue that we would be able to apply to our school funding and hopefully help us with the funding, the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So hopefully we'll have a good report for you by the end of the month.
Thank you, and of course, to the extent that there are new revenues, I know that with that particular ballot question, some of it is ostensibly earmarked, but I know anytime there's new revenues, there's a lot of hands coming at it.
Yes.
So to the extent to which you can advocate for K through twelve education, we are of course always very appreciative.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment with the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for their annual report. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, known as CPAC, is a volunteer organization made up of parents and caregivers whose children receive special education services through Shrewsbury Public Schools. CPAC board members are with us tonight to provide an update regarding the organization's activities for the past year, so welcome. If you want to go down the line and introduce yourselves, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you.
Before you introduce yourselves, I might just interrupt. I'm noticing our robotics team is still here, and you are absolutely welcome to stay, but I don't want you to feel compelled either, so just to make sure that, if there's other things that are, some of you I know are graduating and have nothing else to do, but others may be running for finals, so it will not be insulting if you feel you need to take your leave, so thank you, and welcome to our group from the CPAC.
All right, well, thank you very much. My name's Meg Barley. I'm the Assistant Director of Special Education and People Personnel Services, and I have the lovely opportunity of working with our Parent Advisory Council, who's with us tonight. This is Colleen Corbett, as well as Jill DeBender, and they're going to be going through their presentation, and hopefully I, oh, there we go.
Well, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to share the work CPAC has done this past year. Next. Given the hour, we will try to fly through these.
We sure will.
And Jill DeBender?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, one of our team, our leadership team members is missing tonight. Blake Poggi had a parental conflict, so she couldn't make it, but I'd like to thank Jill DeBender and Blake Poggi publicly for all their efforts this year. Some facts about CPAC, we are not a PTO, which is what we're typically mistaken for, because our focus is on families who receive special ed services from pre-K to twelve. Next. Our mission statement, we believe in the power of parents working together to make an impact, or to make a difference. And although I've learned a lot, work being part of CPAC, what keeps me involved is connect, working with Blake and Jill, and also connecting and hopefully helping some of our families. Next. What we do, so really, everything we do is to help our families navigate the world of special education, because it's complicated, there's lots of acronyms, and it's also, you know, very personal and emotional, because it's your child and your children that are affected. So in order to serve our families best, we surveyed them in 2015, and the top area of interest was, of course, the IEP prep. The second most interested area was developing social skills. So our first event this year, we, next, was When Friends Don't Come Easy, and it was at Floral School, and we had a good turnout, and it was a great opportunity for parents to, you know, connect themselves and talk about challenges their children faced and strategies, and they also actually made connections in the room, the parents, some of the parents had similar age children, and they exchanged information, so that was really great. Our next event was Autism Insurance in Massachusetts, so if you think IEPs are complicated, try accessing the benefits. So this was an event we co-hosted with Westboro CPAC, and it was well-attended as well. And then we had our Meet the Directors with Meg Belzito and Megan Bartlett, and we just are extremely fortunate to have two incredibly supported partners in Meg and Megan and Meg. Thank you, ladies, and you came out twice for us this year, Meet the Directors and then an event later on in the spring. And then our big event this year was really executive functioning, and it's kind of a trendy topic. We had about a hundred people at the library. It's frankly, you know, most students need help with executive functioning, most adults do too. So anyway, every year we're hoping to have a big, big event like this to bring attention to CPAC.
Okay. We also tried to address the fact that many parents can't come in the evening, and most of our meetings are in the evening. That was an issue I faced when my children were younger, and so we were able to have two coffees that were at Cafe Noir, both in November and in April, and just a very casual chat, catch up on things, share information, that type of thing, so that really addressed some of the parents' concerns that when they can't come in the evening, they could come to a daytime coffee. In January, we had a CPAC general meeting when Dr. McGee and Jason Pelitch came to our meeting and talked to us about the issues facing the district, asked answered questions for us, and we really appreciated that information. In February, we co-hosted the Understanding Neuropsychological Evaluations. It was held at West Boylston High School, and Dr. Joseph Moldover was the presenter. He's just fabulous. If you don't know him, he's just, he was really great. In March, we had the Basic Rights in Special Education class that was presented by Federation for Children with Special Needs, and that's always an annual event that we do, and I can say that no matter who the presenter is and how many times you see it, you learn something new every time, so it's really an informative thing and very helpful to have it on a regular basis. In May, Meg Belzito and Megan Bartlett came and subjected themselves to our, some of our tough questions, and, but one of the issues that had come out from the survey that we had done in the previous year was that we all talk about the difficulty in transition. Special needs kids generally have a difficult time with transition, no matter what that is, whether it's stopping one thing and starting another, and certainly in this community, sometimes you're only in a school for two years at a time, and so that trait, a new building, and new teachers, and new principal, and new routines, and new cafeteria, really can be very overwhelming for our kids, and they're struggling anyway sometimes for a variety of reasons. And so we addressed that issue, they were, Megan, Megan, were very nice to come and talk to us about it, talked to us about the overview of just the building transitions and district strategies and department goals and objectives. It was a good session. Just at the end of May, we had a music therapy workshop that we co-hosted with Westboro, and I understand it was a very successful meeting as well. Looking at 2018 and 19, we're looking at potentially having Jessica Minahan, who's a behavior analyst and a special education provider, and also a co-author of Behavioral Code, come and talk to us as a potential speaker, and we're also looking at Nancy Dugan that is involved with decoding dyslexia, which is also a big issue in our community, and parents are very interested in hearing more about that. So that's something we have yet to schedule. One of the things that our outreach has also done is, as you've heard, that we sometimes co-host our meetings, particularly the ones that cost a little bit more money. It's really an advantage if we can couple with another CPAC and share that expense. It also brings out more people, and I think speakers really appreciate talking to a larger group than a smaller group, makes it worth their while, and so we will continue to do that. Just in the activities that we've participated in this year, we attend the PTO meetings for the different schools and talk to the PTOs about what CPAC does and see if parents from those schools are interested then in participating with our organization as well. We were able to meet with the special ed leads at the, at Meg Belzito's office. We talked to all of the providers, all the special ed directors and chair people, and shared our concerns with them. We've attended the PTO President's Council quarterly, that's run by Dr. Sawyer. We attend Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, West Boylston, CPAC meetings, and kind of share activities and share thoughts, et cetera, and we've gone to the Visions of Community Conference that is held- We talked to all of the providers, all the special ed directors and, and chair people, and shared our concerns with them. We've attended the PTO Presidents' Council quarterly that's run by Dr. Sawyer. We attend Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, West Boylston, CPAC meetings, and kind of share activities and share thoughts, et cetera. And we've gone to the Visions of Community Conference that is held at Seaport World Trade Center in Boston. So that's a big mouthful. I got through that, and I'm trying to make it fast, because I know that you're really have a full plate tonight. One of the things that I'll just quickly mention, and, and I know that everything, all the printouts that you have are the same as the flyers, and Colleen did a great job of making them very detailed, so I'm not going to explain a lot. But I would like to, to thank Erin Konzano for finally, we were finally able to start our meetings, and she is our liaison to the school committee, and we've had our meetings with her and with Dr. Sawyer. And so I think that's going to move forward into the next year, and we're looking forward to that. We have some plans for the coming year. We're talking about creating a website, which has just been slow in coming. We probably could use some of the high school students. I'm always feeling very impressed with myself if I can turn on my computer and get my email. So that's where I am. But in any event, we're, we're talking about having a website with documents and resources. We're talking about working with the special ed department to develop an introduction to special education documents and talk about the vocabulary that's used. And if you're new to special ed or education itself, and certainly IEPs, et cetera, there's a lot of terminology and vocabulary that's just, you know, overwhelming. So we're going to address those things too. As for goals, again, I think we're, we're going to continue to do all the things that I've just talked about. Continuing to, to have an outreach, socialize, and, and have educational programs and support our parents in whatever ways that we can. And I'm talking quickly so I can get to this part, because this is the part I wanted to talk about. All of that was factual, and you needed to hear what we're doing. I think that we're working hard. I really do. I think that we're really trying to just do everything we can to, to help our, our community and our parents. And the, Colleen put this on the last slide and for collaboration, and I, and that one just grabbed me this year, I have to tell you. And I thought, what a great word for us that describes this year. Because I think with every passing year, we really do reach out to different communities, different people, and, and just make ourselves known in the community, that we're more and more present, that we're, we're being recognized. We're recognizing families, families, and that's a good thing. And so I'm just going to tell you one quick little story. My son is in Special Olympics gymnastics. And I was talking to one of the other parents, her child is also in, on the team. She lives in a different community, and we share information, as parents all do. And she is also participatory in her local CPAC. And I told her, oh, we're going to have this meeting, and we're going to give our report to the school committee tonight. And she, she looked at me, and she said, do they care? Do they care? Do they listen? And I was so pleased and, and honestly could say yes and yes. They care, and they listen. And I think of all the things, I just speeded through, you know, spent, sped through on our presentation. We've talked about, we meet with Dr. Sawyer, we've met with Erin, we're meeting with Megan, Megan. We're meeting with other communities. We're spreading out and sharing that information, getting feedback, and getting the support from you. And so I, I just, I'm pleased to say that I think that what we've talked about today certainly demonstrates that we have a working relationship, and we also have a mutual respect for both with Meg, Belzito, excuse me, dry mouth? With Meg, with Megan, with Dr. Sawyer, with the school committee. And we're very, very pleased, and I think that is the trifecta. We really feel like we are listened to, we are cared about, we feel responded to, we get feedback, and that's really a great feeling. And we're totally aware of the fact that not every CPAC has that. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity tonight to share our accomplishments this year with you. And we look forward to another year together. And that's what I have to say. Any, any questions or?
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments?
Well, it's a comment, yes, and I have to say that I've loved watching this group really boom this year. And I think you hit the nail on the head. It is about collaboration. I liked a lot of the workshops you have offered this year, because I, I find that it's so inclusive of all kinds of learners, whether you have an IEP or whether or not. Executive functioning is for everyone.
It's everybody.
The friendship piece that you had at Floral Street for everyone. And so I, I think your movement's going to grow even more, because that's what I want for you, is so that more and more people and families are aware of the really good work that you're doing, so that you have more help yourselves, and, and that you have more attending, and, and you benefit more, more families. So thank you. Thank you for your good work too.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Fritz.
Thank you for your kind words. We don't always get that, so. And I know from the past, it sounds like you're, you're having an increase in attendance at your meetings, because that was something, you're working really hard and trying everything, but it looks like things are really working now, and you're, you're getting more people to understand what your organization is about and to really learn. So I think that's great, because I know you've put a lot of time and effort into getting that going.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we really, we really are.
Ms. Wonsky.
I appreciate the presentation, as I did last year as well. It's a tremendous forum for families and students that are receiving special education. And as you said, navigating through the complexity that is special education and the acronyms. Three years into this, and I'm still learning, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult. I think the events and the flexible hours that you provide to the families are incredible. And I'm sure in the future, there'll be some type of collaboration, maybe with the, the TV studio or some students that are passionate about video production, and I'd love to see more from, from this group.
And just to echo that, thank you for the work that you do in reaching out to parents and bringing them into the fold. I am sure that for parents who are new to the world of special education and IEPs, that it must be overwhelming at times. And while our staff certainly do wonders and work miracles, I know also that there can't be a substitute for having someone, a parent, who's been through a similar experience to be able to talk to and sort of have that kind of conversation and get that level of support. So thank you for everything that you guys do, including your ongoing working relationship with us and with the Central Office Administration.
Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Really appreciate the presentation, and congratulations on a very successful year. I think, as was stated, very important opportunities that you provided for parents of students with special needs. And I, I loved the collaboration with other CPACs from around the area as well. I think that just makes you stronger. In terms of some of your plans for next year, Jessica Minahan, I've, I've seen her speak a couple of different times. We brought her to our summer institute.
Yep, twice.
Twice, and I've seen her at the superintendent's conference. I, I think that I know that there are some things happening across the district. Our own educators are studying some of her work. And if there were an opportunity for us to potentially partner in helping to bring her to the district, that's something we can talk about as well. Just as you share with other CPACs, I'm sure we can find a way to help support that. I think that would be very beneficial to our parent community as well. Similarly, in terms of the website, I know you said it jokingly, but we are trying to provide more opportunities for our students to do real-life projects. And so whether it's. Exactly, or it could be from one of our computer science classes at the high school, our coding classes. We might be able to, to find some opportunity to have some, get some assistance that way as well, and, and have it to be not just another assignment for those students. So we can talk about that further. And I look forward to our conversations continuing going forward. And it, you know, certainly that's our job, is to listen and to make sure that we understand what's happening and that we can work together to try to resolve, make things better, resolve challenges where they exist. And that's, that's the way we always do better for kids ultimately. So thank you for the time and the effort you spend as leaders to make this happen. We really appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is our school improvement plans at the elementary level. Each school's council worked to help develop a proposed school improvement plan in conjunction with our strategic priorities and our portrait of a graduate. These documents have been provided in advance to members of the school committee. And we're now going to hear presentations on each from our intrepid group of elementary principals. Lisa Robinson, Chris Girardi, Tiffany Ostrander, Lisa McCubrey, Wendy Bell, Brian Maybe. Once you guys get set up.
Turn the slide over, Brian.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And just for the benefit of our folks at home, if you want to go down the line quickly and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Ostrander. I'm the principal at Calvin College School.
Good evening. I'm Chris Girardi. I'm the principal at Beale Early Childhood Center.
And good evening. I'm Wendy Bell. I'm the principal at Patton Elementary.
Hi, I'm Lisa McCubrey, principal at Floral Street School.
Hi, Lisa Robinson, principal at Parker Road Preschool.
Hello, Brian Maybe, principal at Spring Street School.
And we can't forget Gina Kelly.
Shout out to Gina Kelly.
He is a principal. Principal in, turn out floral. Yep, so she's along too, for the ride.
Thanks for the support, Gina. So before we begin our elementary school improvement plan presentation, we wanted to start by thanking our school councils. Our teams consist of parents, faculty, community members, and we appreciate their consistent helpful feedback and input regarding just a range of topics. Our members always come prepared and ready to engage in just really meaningful conversations, so we appreciate all of their work that they've helped put into this plan as well. So tonight, we'll share a brief overview of the 2018-2020 Early Childhood and Elementary School Improvement Plan. We have five common goals across the elementary schools. So we'll start by sharing those common goals in ways that we will work to collectively advance them in each building. And then following that portion of our presentation, we'll provide specific school improvement plan goals that are individualized and focus on the priorities or individual needs at our buildings.
The first goal that we'll present tonight is directly aligned with the district goal around facility needs and how we can support that at the elementary level. And if you look at the graphic on the left, that's one of our many wonderful music-on-a-cart stations, which they decorate very beautifully. But it is an example of how, I think, over time, our enrollment increase and state mandates have really put a stress on the space that we have, and it's peeled away from some of the dedicated spaces that we've had for things like special education, music, art, and so forth. So working kind of parallel with the Beale Building Project, we feel it's our responsibility to, our responsibility to do the work at the elementary level, to identify the space that we have within the buildings, to see what they're being used for, and as we approach the potential of a new building, seeing how we can eventually allocate those spaces to have equitable programming and opportunity across all the elementary schools. One nice piece is that we've already started that work a few years back with identifying, identifying the spaces that we have within each ele- elementary school and at the preschool. So that work has begun, and as we progress forward with the Beale Building Project, our hope is to really start to identify spaces to provide the equitable, equitable programming.
Our next goal falls under the strategic priority of learning environments where everyone's success matters. We've gotten a really great start on this already this year. You can see we have four different bullets, four different kind of goal areas that we plan to work on over the next two years, all under the umbrella of inclusive practices, which are the instructional, academic, and behavioral strategies that are utilized to improve the social, emotional, and academic outcomes for all students, both students with special needs and without special needs within the general education setting. We had a pretty large cohort of teachers across the elementary level this year participate in professional development and ongoing coaching in the area of co-teaching, which is considered one of the types of inclusive practices that we can use. We have another cohort beginning next year to expand that. So currently, over the next couple of years, we're looking to kind of analyze what we're doing, inventory, the different practices that we're using, continue professional development, both in the buildings and through perhaps co-teaching, professional development, and increase participation of students in those settings, where more students are getting what they need in regular education classrooms. And then finally, determining common measures across all of the schools that will help to identify students needing support.
So one of the frameworks of inclusive schools is around having a strong approach to teaching social, emotional learning. So these kind of smaller goals fall within that, that area of our, our teaching and learning in school. So one of the, one of the goals that we set over the next couple of years is to establish school-based kind of leadership committees or steering committees at each school to support the building of a common understanding of what social, emotional learning is, and what those competencies are, why they're important, how they relate to academic outcomes for students, and just wellness. So we are going to do that work, and, and we think those committees, you know, for the first couple of years, will really just help, help us to build the common understanding across all schools, but also to collect just a, an inventory of what we're already doing. We're already doing great work to address students' social, emotional learning. We want to build upon that work, so let's see what we're already doing. We're also committing at the elementary level to engage in professional development. We felt pretty strongly, it wouldn't be, you know, a choose to participate in furthering your knowledge base on social, emotional learning. So at our level, we committed to, you know, a hundred percent of our faculty will engage in some shared learning together over the next two years. So in order for us to guarantee that's going to happen, we really, really looked at our faculty meeting time as areas to do that work together. So from our learning, in our P, our shared PD, and the work of our, our school-based committees, we want to be able to establish an implementation plan too, and we want it to be a smart one. So knowing kind of where we are and where we want to go will help us to set some action steps and develop that plan and share that out with you. And, and also, you know, we, we need to measure this work, you know. How are our students growing with their competencies, with their grittiness, with their connections to adults in their building, with their ability to self-regulate, with their ability to work together, which, you know, the robotics team talked a whole lot about and showed great success with. So we need to assess that, and that's kind of tricky. We're, we're going to, over the next couple of years, pilot some surveys at an elementary school, mine, I think. So, and, and, and that's really going to inform a more systematic approach across all of our schools. And it might, it should and will look different in, in the early childhood and upper elementary. But we want to, we want to do some piloting and learn about a best way to measure how our students are doing, how we're doing with supporting their growth, and really tracking, I think, students too, who may be struggling in, in some of those areas, so that we can take action with them. And then finally, you know, the, we want to improve as a district, our support systems for staff and students and their overall well-being. So, you know, we want to take stock of what those supports already look like, and again, identify areas to expand upon them over these next couple of years. We've taken some great steps in that way as well, partnering with the Center for Mindfulness, offering after-school activity programs such as yoga for students. We want to see what we're doing and see where we have opportunities to grow that for our staff and students.
Our next goal is, connects with our district goal of connecting learning to a complex world. And you've seen some great examples of that tonight. So over the past couple of years, we have been exploring PBL, project-based learning, at the elementary level, and have pockets of successes in ways that we can engage kids in some of those experiences. So in the, in the next two years, what we'd like to do is really take a look at what we've done, what aligns with what we believe are some of the competencies that are some of the traits that we want kids to have as they learn, including critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration. So once we identify what we already do, find out what, how we can improve what we already do, and then maybe refine and develop other ways within our existing curricular structures that we can begin to incorporate some of these skills that we want kids to demonstrate. It looks very different at the elementary level than it may look at the high school. Just like with some other knowledge that we hope to instill on our students throughout the course of their elementary career, what are ways that we can have them not necessarily experience that PBL, all-in-one fell swoop project or experience, but how can we incorporate critical thinking into what we're doing? How can we incorporate collaboration and communication and creativity in what we're doing every single solitary day? Just like building skills, these are some of the things that may be in pockets that we can begin to do, and then as we grow, build that into an entire. and then as we grow, build that into an entire experience of of PBL. PBL is defined as kids solving a problem or an authentic problem or an issue that is over the course of an expanded period of time, a week or month or whatever, that they collaborate, research, and really curate a presentation to a public audience that shares their knowledge and shares what they've learned. So we're hoping at the elementary and the early childhood group that we can really took, take a look at what we're doing, where we think we need to go that will leverage kids being able to to practice and learn these skills, and then how can that be done in our existing structure of what we're doing every single solitary day? We certainly don't want it to be something that we're adding on, something, as Lisa said, we're doing a lot of this already, just identifying it, refining it, and building it. And how do we make that process consistent across the elementary group and preparation for the middle school level?
Thank you. All of our school improvement plans, the final part is a school-specific goal. So I'll be talking about Parker Road first, but just to give you a little bit of reason why we have our school-specific goals is because at each different level, while we're targeting the strategic priorities and the district goals, there is a unique way that each school needs to approach a certain goal to move that level forward, so preschool will look different from the upper elementary and the kindergarten a little, and also differently. And we got information from our school councils through surveys and conversations with small groups and at faculty meetings and with individuals. And the purpose is really to move our schools towards advancing, toward reaching the school district priorities and goals. So at Parker Road Preschool, we are going to be targeting social, emotional learning, competencies, and approaches to play and learning. This goal is aligned with the well-being goal, and it also does connect to the complex world and learning in the complex world goal. And we will be forming our steering committee, and from there, we'll be utilizing one resource, which is from the Department of Education and from the Department of Early Education and Care, the social and emotional learning and approaches to play and learning. So within that document, there are five competencies and 12 standards related to social, emotional learning, and then five standards related to play and learning. And what we'll be doing that we believe is important at Parker Road is connecting the social, emotional learning and how you approach learning in a way that incorporates play and connects to our curriculum. So on the right, there's a picture of two students, and they're working together with a variety of materials, and that is connected to the science standards as they're exploring, while also integrating the social, emotional learning and approaches to play. So there's a lot that will happen in that way, and we'll be recognizing what we already do well, and I think you heard that that's a goal among all of us for all of the strategic priorities, is recognizing what we do well and getting even better.
I think one thing that really drove the lens, and I think I could probably speak for all of us here, is that our school councils had the opportunity from the beginning to be part of the the Portrait of a Graduate talk at the beginning of the year back in October. So they've really been part of the Portrait of a Graduate, which led to our strategic priorities and to our district goals, which funnels down into our school improvement plans, and I think by the time we got here, we had such a clear lens as to what we were looking for as a district that we landed in a very similar place that Parker Road Preschool did, which was the approaches to play and learning. This, and and just to build off of the the curriculum piece, there is a framework from the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Education, that is specific to so, uh, social and emotional learning, which is early childhood only, and it really mirrors the social and emotional learning standards across all grade levels, but there, the one component that is unique is the approaches to play and learning, which, as we dove into it with our school council and our faculty, as we opened up these SEL standards over the course of the year, we really felt that we had a responsibility to really dive into this area to see what it is and how we can make it live in the town of Shoesbury based on what our core values are. And when we talk about play and learning, a lot of this is intentional, a lot of it is so connected with cultural proficiency, inclusive practices, project-based learning. You know, when you look at project-based learning for three, four, five, six-year-olds, you really are talking a lot about play. And again, it's intentional play, but it's the developmental piece that really, really will prepare these students for the ongoing relationships and and the work that they're going to do, so they'll end up like these kids someday, is my hope. But that that's our focus at Beal, and I really appreciate, I think, the lens that we're able to funnel down to get to that work from a district level all the way on down.
Coolidge is also going to zoom in on social, emotional learning. Our focus is really going to be connected to clear, consistent, and regular communication regarding the social, emotional learning practices that we've been building upon this year in our building. We really want to focus on at least two communications per trimester that that share best practices, common language, common tools, and it might not be just a written piece, but rather a video that we found to be moving, or an article, or maybe it's a teacher-made or a student-made video that shows social, emotional learning. We completed our end-of-year survey recently for families, and one thing that struck us were, parents are very familiar with what some of our common tools are, which are featured here at the bottom, but they're not exactly sure how to use them at home. So there was, there was a mother who shared with me, and we giggled about it, that her son one day looked at her and said, "Mom, you are at a five, take a break." And she's like, "I don't know if I should be offended." Perceiving how I'm feeling, this is great. So we want to talk more about what what also can translate into your home. What is the thermometer, how does that look like at your house? Can you use it? You know, when your child is at the grocery store, reminding them, ew, that food looks gross, that's a thinking bubble thing. We can't say that out loud, we might hurt people's feelings. So just helping, helping these tools translate in into the home, and of course, that will help increase student use of the tools as well, so. And we're really looking forward to having some type of community engagement or parent night to put all these skills into practice.
So at Floral Street School, we, we, our council has has noticed over the past few years in in reviewing the family survey, just an an area where we can build some consistency around written communications home to families from classrooms. The the percentage is always very high in 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 terms of parents saying, yes, we find them helpful. That's great. But then when we read their written remarks, we're we're noticing that there's just a lot of variability in terms of how frequently and regularly parents are getting those written communications from classrooms, as well as just the kinds of content that's being shared. And and so we, we decided it was time to kind of take some action there, and 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 we've had some support from support from the Faculty Advisory Council as well. So we are going to, we're going to start by, like, it's the theme around the evening, take stock on what our communications actually do look like. We really haven't had that conversation across our 32 classrooms. We're going to do that. And then we're going to to build some consensus together around what are some common criteria for these written communications home, common experiences we want our parents to have. Because the end goal is, we we want our families to feel connected, informed, engaged. And if if we're getting feedback from them that it it really is dependent, it it really is so different based on, you know, with across classrooms in a grade span and certainly across grade spans, we feel like we can we can do some of that work together with, as a council and with, certainly with teachers, support and involvement. And then, you know, related to that, we we want to explore some more online platforms of encouraging more two-way communications with families. We're, we're trying out the Seesaw app that Patton and staff were raving about a couple, last year, a couple of years ago, and a and a couple of others, and and getting a lot of positive feedback from parents and from staff, and so, you know, we want to just do some more work together and learn more about how to leverage that with families. I mean, it's a notification that goes right to their phones, how great is that? Not unlike a Facebook post where you can, you know, open up your phone and see a picture of some, something your child is working on in the moment. And it, that's just one example of how that particular app works. So we want to explore that together too, and and leverage more of our, like, our our specialist's ability to engage with families, so beyond classroom teachers, is is a part of that two-year goal at our school.
Along the same lines, over the past few years, as our school council has analyzed and looked at our our parent survey, we've noticed some consistency with parents feeling really confident in how their children are performing against grade-level standards in reading and math, the communication has been pretty consistent and clear in those areas, but feeling a little unsure of what's expected in writing and how their child is actually doing in writing and what their children need to work on. So our goal for the next two years is to focus on communications and two-way, two-way back-and-forth communications with families to increase parents' understanding and students' understanding of how they're doing with their writing. It's really hard to see, but our first-grade team's already gotten a a little bit of a jump on this this spring. They developed a rubric to kind of test out with families where the teacher is circling different areas on the on the rubric, but then underneath, writing down a goal for the child, an individual goal for the child, and then sending it home, the parent signs, and and provides feedback and comments as well. And the feedback from parents in those those classrooms has been really good. So one of our action steps in in this goal is to do something like this, where we're sending home something that will come, go back and forth once a month, and all of the grade levels have committed to doing that, including information in my weekly listserv once a month on writing expectations. Doing what we did this past year and having our instructional coach, Lisa Papason, do a presentation on writing expectations at curriculum night. That went over really well with families. And then just taking the time, as we do with reading and math, especially during parent-teacher conferences, to communicate how individual children are doing against the grade-level standards and where they could improve so that parents are able to support their children. We're hoping this will empower both the parents and the students to continue to move themselves forward as they learn how to communicate through their writing.
And our goal relates to mindfulness and also some SEL, social, emotional competencies. This year, we did some work with faculty and staff on learning a little bit about mindfulness-based stress reduction strategies. And it really, the focus was staff and faculty. And we anchored our our work with a book called Mindfulness for Teachers. And we had the opportunity to have a book discussion group once a month that spoke about what are some of the strategies that we can use as teachers in the classroom with some of the, to help us with some of the typical things that happen in the classroom each day. So we did a little bit of work on that, and we also had the opportunity, due to many of our faculty participating in the UMass Mindfulness-Based Stress Reduction Course, to come in and share some of the practices. So that's the work that we did this year with faculty and staff addressing how we can use mindfulness-based practices to reduce stress. So in the coming year, we're going to segue and leverage that work, and again, anchor our work in a book, Mindfulness in Classrooms, and that really is a continuum of, now that we've learned a little bit about how we can do it for ourselves, how can we help our kids to use some of the practices to become more aware of themselves, and then also how to manage themselves? And both of those are competencies that we look for when we are helping kids to develop these social, emotional competencies, and as a result of our learning, we're hoping to, as a team, collaboratively develop units and lessons that we can integrate some of those practices into our instruction. Now, there's a lot that we already do, and I don't know if any of you have heard of Gold Noodle. It's a web-based website that teachers have a resource in a variety of sensory, emotional, just a lot of resources that kids can practice that are very short in time, usually a minute, that yoga poses, stretching, just a variety of strategies that help kids to gather themselves, refocus, and become prepared for the upcoming lesson or learning activity. So we're very excited about this, and we're excited to share, hopefully, what we have learned and has helped us throughout the course of the year with our students in the coming year, so that's our goal for the next two years. And that's the end of our common and individual school improvement plan goals, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, comments? Mrs. Fritz?
Thank you, it was a great presentation. It's always good to hear from each of you what's going on. I think you all do great work in this district, so thank you first for everything that you do. I also look at, when you're talking about analyzing what we do to see what we can refine, and I think some places, we, not here, but they, you know, let's just do this, instead of like analyzing what's great, and then then maybe move on, so I think that's a really good step, because we do good work. But what can we do better? What do we, might not have to do anymore? I also like the holistic approach to education, where we're looking at, you know, students and, you know, mindfulness and the wellness of their body, their mind, everything. I think the world is a lot more difficult to grow up in today than maybe when I was growing up. And Brian, you talked about, you know, teachers dealing with typical things in the classroom, but I think unfortunately, there's atypical things that happen now that are different than it was 20 years ago. So how do we deal with that? How do we make sure the students are okay, but that the teaching staff is okay? So I think this is a great approach going forward. Like, again, I think it's that whole holistic look at education, which is something that we have to do, so thank you.
Mrs. Gonzano?
What I liked about your presentation tonight is how thoughtful it is, and it's methodical. I thought of, you know, your chunking, your learning, all of that good stuff that you do. Prioritizing seems to be a big piece of it, and and I appreciate that, when you prioritize something, you have to put other things, you know, down at the list, but these issues of the social, emotional, the PBL, communication, professional development, all of those are so important and essential, and I like how you're going to take your time in figuring out the best course. I think, like Sandy said, this isn't just, we're not going to just snap, and it's, you know, we got it figured out, we're going to be slow and methodical about it, and and we'll get it right because of the good work that you do and the staff that we have and the students that we have, so. This is a, I'm really looking forward to the outcome and and what it looks like in a couple of years.
Dr. McGee?
So, good presentation. Like all the emphasis on social, emotional learning, I think it's all very important. The one, the one thing that comes to my mind is that the school district, the schools and what you teach aren't just the product of your work and the administration's policies and emphasis, but it's, it's also the, we're basically meeting the requirements of the community and of the parents. And we create an atmosphere that meets everyone's needs. And so when we're dealing with this significant and growing problem of anxiety and depression and the like among our students, I don't think they were born with that. I think that somehow the atmosphere in which they are growing up is creating that. And seeking ways to identify it, to to mitigate it certainly is is a sensible thing to do, but I think also part of it needs to be us critically looking at the atmosphere we're creating that may be leading to this in some way. When I participated in the Innovation and Learning Group, I was impressed with the notion that we administer a lot of tests that sort people out, but sort them out to a degree that doesn't matter. That if you wait a few months, everybody kind of is performing at the same level anyway, but we create the tension around that sorting. We develop schedules that are so intense, and when we look at those top 10 students that come before us every year, it's always dazzling to us to see all that they achieve both in school and after school, but there are that same level of stress is distributed among another 400 students as well, and not everyone may be able to exist in that atmosphere without showing more strain. And so I just, I I wonder if there's room in in this thoughtful planning that you're doing for for looking at how we're contributing to to the generation of this stress that that the students are under, and whether there are ways to have a dialogue with the parents who who feel that, you know, these sorts of things are very important, and maybe they aren't.
Mr. Wensky?
I want to thank you for the presentation. What I appreciate about this process and the school council is the collaboration with parents, with teachers, with community members, it's, it's, you know, it's a team effort, and I like the idea of finding paths within the existing And I like the idea of finding paths within the existing curricular structures to improve upon what's there. There's a lot of good things happening in the district, and, you know, finding ways to, to strengthen what we're doing well. And maybe as Sandy said, you know, maybe things that maybe we don't have to do as much. But thank you very much.
I'll add my voice to that and commend you for the work you're doing. First of all, just to thank you to the members of our school councils. I know these are very large groups of not only educators, but parents as well, who devote a considerable amount of time to their work. Thank you for the presentation tonight and for the goals that you brought before us. I know that you are all leaders who set very high standards for your schools, for your students, for what you hope to achieve. But what strikes me about these goals is much like our district's approach, they're all ambitious, but they're also achievable too. This is a realistic set of priorities that I think will help us to assess the many strengths. That was sort of a common theme that I picked up on, assessing the many strengths that are in place in our school cultures now. Quite obviously, we're doing something right at all levels, but of course, especially at the elementary level. So kudos on a, not only a great presentation, but also on goals that I think are moving us in the right direction, but also achievable as well. We do need to take a vote on these plans. Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
Yes, please. Just briefly, again, thank you to all the school councils. Thank you for the leadership that the elementary principals are providing. Not only are these extraordinarily successful individual leaders, but they also operate quite well as a team. I would, I, I'll be curious to know if there's any team of elementary principals across any district in the Commonwealth that collaborates as well as this group does. That leads to, and I don't, frankly, I'm not sure there's any other district that has this kind of common emphasis across the district. That's one thing that I was always vexing for school districts is how do you have consistency when you have multiple schools that have the same program? There obviously is going to be unique aspects to every school culture and climate, as it should be, but to have the kind of consistency that we have, while at the same time maintaining individual school identity is something very special, I think, that we have here in Shrewsbury. The principalship, since, since I was an elementary principal more than a decade ago now, has become much more complex. It's become more demanding, and these leaders are, are doing an outstanding job, really making this work for our kids and for our staff and for, and for our parents. And for that, I think they, they owe a debt of gratitude from, from the community. And just, you know, one quick piece, and I was, I was pleased to hear Ms. Ostrander introduce herself as the principal of Coolidge School. I know that although certainly her school community knows this, this is probably her first time that she's been presenting here publicly since the interim label was removed. She's done an extraordinary job in her first year at Coolidge. And was very pleased, based on the feedback from the staff and from the parent community, to make her the, the quote-unquote permanent principal at Coolidge School, which is well-deserved, and she's been a great member of the team immediately as well. So again, thank you for your hard work, and we're really very much appreciative of your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the school improvement plans for Parker Road Preschool, Beale Early Childhood Center, Coolidge School, Floral Street School, Patton School, and Spring Street School.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, I believe, is our middle school school improvement plan. So continuing with the same theme, moving to the middle level with our Sherwood Middle School Principal, Dr. Jane Lizzot, and our Oak Middle School Principal, Dr. Anne Jones. Dr. Lizzot, Dr. Jones, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'll start just by saying that Anne and I are very happy to be here tonight to share our collective middle-level goals as well as our individual school goals that have been established to support the strategic priorities and the district goals. We're very grateful to our faculty and to our school councils for their guidance and support throughout this process. And as we look ahead to the next two school years with goals that are focused on meaningful and effective teaching and learning.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks for having us here tonight.
We're going to start with our first goal. All of our goals are related to the strategic priorities. And the first strategic priority that we address is the space and resources to support effective learning. Participating in building a FY20 budget plan that meets the resources of the middle level and supports each school improvement goal is very important to us. This goal really is necessary, is a necessary ingredient for all of our other school improvement goals in order to make these happen. The demands placed on schools continue to grow, and we really need the adequate resources in order to meet all those demands. This includes the very important work that each of us is doing with both of our schools to address our individual needs, which we'll discuss in more detail. But I think it's, it's important for the committee to know that Jane and I are both very committed to working with our fellow district administrators in the school committee to identify the funding needs for the programs that we're going to be talking about and advocate for the necessary, that necessary funding for upcoming fiscal years. The second strategic priority is learning environments where everyone's success matters. We've got two goals that our schools share, and these few that we're going to be talking about first are goals that we, are both of our schools share, but we will be talking about some individual goals as well. The first goal is to create a common understanding of the benefits of inclusive schools and develop a shared systematic approach to make sure that everyone has equitable access and opportunity for successful learning. Generally speaking, inclusive practice is an approach to teaching that recognizes the diversity of students and really helps us enable all students to access course content, fully participate in learning activities, and demonstrate their knowledge and strengths. And when we're talking about inclusive practice, we're not only talking about students with special needs. We're talking about students who come from various lifestyles, different variety of cultures that we see in our community, and different backgrounds. So it's important to recognize that inclusive practice goes far beyond just the work that we're doing already to meet the needs of students with special education needs in our classroom. So by December 2019, our goal is to create a common definition and collaboration with the district. And like the elementary school said, to create an inventory of the practices that we already have at our schools that are successful. And once we've done that, to create some specific targets for implementation of inclusive practices, one of which is co-teaching on a more comprehensive level in both of our schools. By 20, June 2020, we will report out on the progress toward implementation targets and also will report out on levels of participation for students with and without disabilities in inclusive settings such as co-teaching. Our second goal is to analyze the data related to academic performance and other indicators of success in order to identify gaps amongst populations of our students who may not be achieving what we feel or what the district feels that they should be achieving, or what we know they're capable of achieving. We'll determine implementation action steps for improvement and demonstrate our success at closing those gaps. So by December 2018, we will like to determine which data we're going to use to identify the gaps and monitor the progress of those high-need population of students. And then by December 2019, we'll report out that data for the high-needs populations and determine our action steps that we'll continue to take to make steps towards closing that gap.
As we look to our next strategic priority, the enhanced well-being of all, as the elementary principals so articulately shared, and you as well, we believe that social-emotional learning skills and developing those skills and habits is more important than ever. Our students are, and families and as adults, are, were really being faced with several challenges in the area of social-emotional learning, and we firmly believe that we need, need to pay conscious attention to social-emotional learning and character development. As we've discussed throughout the course of this year, we believe that social-emotional learning is not something else on the plate. As was stated, it's actually the plate itself upon which all other learning is dependent. So as a result, we are, along with our elementary colleagues, will be participating in district and school-based steering committees to again, look at what, what it is we're currently doing, what we feel we need to improve upon, and take those steps. So that begins with assessing our practices as they are, as they stand today and creating those school-based and district-based implementation plans. Again, we believe that by investing time upfront in teaching children to develop abilities, including self-awareness, self-regulation, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, we are increasing time and opportunity for academic success to occur. And as a result, as you have in front of you, we have our middle-level goals. There are three goals there that incorporate what is also on the slide. The picture on the right is the most recent Sherwood social that happened a week or so ago. Those are cell phones, actually?
I wondered what that was.
In front of the stage. But, you know, we try to provide our students with many opportunities, whether it's a large gathering such as the Spring Social, or smaller opportunity, group opportunities that take place after school, including yoga and volleyball and outdoor fun and math counts and STEM challenges, et cetera. We are providing students ways in which to strengthen those skills that they need, those resiliency skills, along with just everyday skills having to do with how to get along with one another, how to communicate, experience laughter and fun and smiling and, you know, all, all of the things that we sometimes take for granted. And we need to make a concerted effort to ensure that all of our students, all of our faculty, and our families are again, having opportunities to learn from one another, engage with one another, and enjoy life because it goes by very quickly. So really being present in those moments to just be in the moment and enjoy and learn together.
The next strategic priority is connected learning for a complex world. We have several, we have three goals in this area, in this strategic priority. The first one is around project-based learning in PBL. Since both schools were involved in the Innovation Study Group that Dr. McGee mentioned a few minutes ago, a few years ago, we have since then incorporated a great deal of project-based learning in our schools to some degree. Many staff members are working with colleagues on project-based learning tasks with their students. So what we, we'd like to do moving forward is to integrate all those experiences that require students at our grade levels to create complex, high-quality work for an authentic audience, with an emphasis on the things that Mr. Mayby discussed, that critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration. By June of 2019, we'd like to create an inventory of our current practices and work on a common definition of PBL. One of the things that we learned in our Innovation and Learning Study Group is that there are lots of way, lots of ways to PBL. And whether it's expeditionary learning, or whether it's the high-tech, high model, there's lots of different ways to do it. And teachers have kind of grabbed onto different pieces of those. And so we'd like to come up with a common definition of that, so we have some consistency across our schools. By June 2020, we will continue to develop our learning opportunities that incorporate authentic audiences and move on to exhibitions, exhibitions of learning, and do that with more improved consistency across the grade levels. For goal number two, we'd like to, we're looking at providing opportunities that help students develop independence after graduation, including exposure to career choices, development of skills such as financial literacy at the middle level. Two ways we, two of our action steps towards doing this is to, again, assess our current practices that provide ways in which students are exposed to a variety of career opportunities. And our goal really is by 2020, we want all students, by the time they get to eighth grade or during eighth grade, to have completed an online career exploration course. Current programming that we're using through grants is called Career Cruising, which is an online program that actually can be paired with Naviance at the high school. So it's a great way to get them into that, that process of using those kinds of tools. Students can take interest inventories and begin to explore different career paths using that tool. It helps them to, to zero in on their aptitudes and, and that sort of thing. So we hope to do that by 2020.
And the third goal is our, we have a goal to create one building-based community partnership at each middle level. And that goal is in line with our strategic priority regarding building community partnerships with businesses, institutions, and individuals in order to increase access to different types of learning. A couple of ways in which that has occurred at Sherwood this year, we had a few fifth-grade teams partner with, thanks to Matt Beaton, the Department of Environmental Protection and WPI, where they, these folks from both the department and WPI, students and professors, came in and talked about protecting watersheds. We bought a number of watershed tables in which the students engage throughout the course of the year based on the learning, the teachers' learning from members of the department and again, both students and staff at WPI. Another example being the Rail Trail Flatbread Company that is, you're probably familiar, Amy particularly in Hudson. And the owners and employees there really work closely with a couple of our sixth-grade teams in helping students build business models, develop different types of flatbread. And they sell the winning flatbread each year, as you probably know it. This is a year two. But continuing to take advantage of the wonderful people in the Shrewsbury community and the local communities who really do want to engage with us, and really trying to find ways to set aside time. A lot of it is how are we going to find the time? And when will we be able to meet? And how will that happen with all the other competing interests? But it's very important to the teachers and the students just thrive in these environments and learning experiences. So our goal is to create one, and hopefully, we'll create more than one, but one in a meaningful way. And the Sherwood's goal, we have, we have a couple there, and you see them in front of you. The cross-curricular teams to develop best practices and school-wide learning expectations to ensure greater consistency across all content areas. And by that, we are looking at, oftentimes, we find students struggle most when they're transitioning from the team classroom, math, science, CLA, social studies, to the phys ed classroom, to the art room, to the lunch room. And we really are finding that we need to get on the same page and streamline our efforts regarding developing expectations with students. And one way in which we're going to do that, thanks to the work of the innovation team who experienced something called Howell's Habits of Work and Learning Standards at King Middle School in Portland, Maine. But it's essentially a more targeted and focused habits of mind where we're measuring students' respect, levels of respect, responsibility, perseverance, the ideas around this is important, you can do it, we won't give up on you, this is how we're going to help you, and this is what we're expecting from you. But really being clear, because I think some, I know, students will say, well, it's okay when I'm in this learning space to do that, but it's not okay when I go to this learning space. And we need to develop those, communicate them, and be consistent with providing students with the supports that they need to be successful. with the supports that they need to be successful across their day in all, in all areas. And the second being, all students will engage in student exhibitions of learning that showcase the authenticity of learning. I referenced the Rail Trail Flatbread Project, but there have been a number of showcases this year that we are proud of, yet we also know we need to work to deepen. And a lot of that's trial and error, and we continue to share with students that we learn by failing and by taking risks and really honing in on the idea that we just got to keep moving forward, pushing forward, plugging along, because the only way we achieve really happiness and success and all the things that we want for our students is by, you know, taking one step at a time. And the whole idea of not giving up, just keep, keep at it, and you will, you will arrive at some point. So that's our second goal.
Our Oak Middle School goal is, has actually already begun this year. At the beginning of the year, we began a multi-phase approach to assessing our school and how we measure up compared to the essential attributes and characteristics and goals of successful middle schools that are outlined by the Association of Middle-Level Educators. The high school has in the past, as you know, sought accreditation from NEASC, and that's a multi-year project where they assess them, they go through a self-study where they assess themselves, and then a visiting team comes in and looks at the school and all the different aspects of successful high schools and makes the determination as to how they measure up and where improvements need to be made and where their strengths are. Since we don't go through the accreditation process as a middle school, we more or less created our own. We have organized our faculty into ten subcommittees, each led by a faculty member who volunteered to be a chairperson. So we have ten subcommittees. They are the Young Adolescent Learner, Academic Program and Instructional Practices, Grading and Reporting Practices, Buildings and Operations, Teaming and Organizational Structure, Student Relations and School Environment, Family and Community Engagement, Student Activities and Athletics, Revisioning and Interventions and Support Services. So each of these groups has a, is a subcommittee and has a subcommittee chairperson. The purpose of each subcommittee is to use a design, design-thinking approach to review current practice and identify the areas for improvement, and then make recommendations as part of our school improvement plan. So we began this process early in the year. We spent some time studying the Association for Middle-Level Educators resource called This We Believe, which is the document that identifies the whole idea and concept of a middle school and what a middle school is and what a successful middle school looks like. So in February, we then began, teachers chose their subcommittees and began, began meeting in subcommittees. So now after, since then, we've had three one-hour subcommittee meetings, and each subcommittee has identified three areas that they're ready to focus in on. For example, under Buildings and Operations, they've decided, given feedback and, and the work that they've done and all of the different documents that they've looked at, that lunch and recess is something that we need to look at, how that functions, building-wide schedule, and teacher duty assignments. So these are three particular areas that they feel we need to, we need to take a look at as a whole school. Our Student Relations and School Environment Subcommittee has zeroed in on, on three areas. Also, looking into and doing some research on an advisory program and what it would mean to incorporate an advisory program into our, our middle school. They are also going to be looking at program, the SEL, the particular SEL goal that we have will be something that they're going to work on. And then they also are interested in looking at disciplinary practices in our school with a focus on restorative justice. So each group really has kind of zeroed in on some of the things that they want to look at. Our timeline is to have recommendations, a set of recommendations along with an action plan for school improvement in the next, by the end of next year. And Jane and I would like to thank our school councils. We have rather large school councils, a lot of, of parent and staff input on our school councils and always makes for, for lively meetings.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Prince.
Thank you again for your presentation. I liked the part about your budgeting and planning piece, and I think one thing we talked about this year as a committee, we didn't have as much input from the community on the budget that we had in the past. And I think having a focus as one of your goals, maybe getting that information more out through the school communities is going to be helpful to that bottom line because I think things are kind of okay and people are really not in tune that it's really going the wrong way again. So thank you for doing that. I think that's great. Jane, I loved your analogy, that plate analogy. I mean, I think that's just for people who don't, what does that mean, social emotional learning? I think that's just a great way of getting parents to understand, you know, this is something that is that foundation because if we're not doing well, you're not going to be able to learn. So touching on that, I think, is really powerful. And, and I love this self-assessment that you're doing, and that's really collaborative with the staff. And I think that's such a powerful thing for people to have a voice in those recommendations and what you're studying. It just makes a better final product out of that. And I also want to thank you because I think, to me as a parent, the middle school years are tough and you have, it's just a lot of stuff going on. And again, as Brian said, typical issues, you don't have typical issues. There's a lot of atypical issues that you have to deal with that take you away from the, your real job. And it's a lot on top of everything you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mrs. Gonzano.
Question about the This We Believe, that, that middle school model that you've been looking at, which is astounding how much work you've done already. In, in the long term, do you see that once you've gone through the process, is that something that would translate to Sherwood as well? Or is this, do you think more because it's seventh and eighth grade, more specific to those two years?
We've talked about it a little bit. You know, it's, it's interesting because we, we just have some, some different goals that we think are most important for our school. And I think Jane's school was able to zero in on a couple of things they really wanted to do. And I feel at Oak, there was, there were a lot of things that people talked about they wanted to do. So I, I felt that time was right to, to really kind of take stock. And I know there's a lot of that taking stock in the, the school improvement plans, and I, I don't want the community to think that that's a lot of time not well-spent because I think there is a lot that we do well. And we don't often recognize and, and take time to, to zero in on some of those things that we really are doing well and expand those practices. Sometimes it's more about jumping on the bandwagon for what's new, and that's not always the best thing.
And, and sometimes it's, it's, you know, you're putting out a fire. So sometimes you can be laser-focused on, like, in your classroom or in, in whatever specific thing you're dealing with, where now you're broadening the view and you're looking school-wide. And so that was just so fascinating to read about, and I was just curious, but you answered it and.
And we are looking to support that work as we can, as we are, as our students will be at Sherwood prior to heading to Oak. The This We Believe, I, I call it a guidebook because we've used it for so long. It's a must-read. It's all of a, might even be less than a hundred pages. But if you Amazon This We Believe, it, it's really all the tenets of what a middle school education should look like, sound like, feel like for students, families, teachers. And it is written very succinctly, and we often take excerpts from This We Believe and use those as a focus of a staff meeting, as talking points for focus, for discussions. So it's a, it's really a wonderful resource.
Sound it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wosky.
I really appreciate the focus on careers in middle school. I like that idea. Even at that early in age, I think that's a great idea. I heard a lot about that Rail Trail Flatbread event last year, and my daughter was talking about it. I saw some things on Public Access about it. It would build a lot of excitement to learning, and I'm glad to see you're doing it again this year. There's a plan to engage other businesses?
Yes, continue. There are some parents in the community who would like to do something similar, like to take them up on that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
And just to echo those remarks, thank you for the work that you're doing similar to with our elementary schools. I think that the goals that you have put forth are both ambitious but also achievable. And I do commend the focus on assessing the strengths that we have now. Again, much like our elementary programming, we're obviously doing quite a bit right, and I do think it's important to make sure we're thoroughly assessing what practices that are in place now are working so that they can be best applied going forward. So kudos to you both before our vote. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I think the plans are strong, and I think I'm looking forward to seeing what happens as they roll out further. And I think that you picked up on the idea that there's a lot of teacher and parent voice that's reflected in these, and that's something that Dr. Wazad and Dr. Jones both do well in terms of reaching out to their constituencies around what the right direction is, as well as providing their own professional guidance. This, it is a critical age for our students in these four years across these two campuses or one campus, two schools on the same campus, and each of which have about a thousand students. These are very large, complex operations. That many students, millions of hormones, and it's, it's complicated work. And I think that the level of innovation that we've seen over the past few years in terms of the way that we're approaching things instructionally, I think, has really been remarkable. And, and I think the, the idea of taking a breath and inventorying what we're doing and then being able to focus on what's consistent, not trying to do too much too fast, I think, is very wise. And, and at the same age, I think harnessing, or at the same time, rather, at this age, student, harnessing the student excitement and energy into these hands-on, project-based types of approaches is really serving them well. And I think we're seeing that as they move through and are very well-prepared for high school, as well as the kind of learning that we're trying to promote as a school district. But again, the same comments I made for the elementary principals, we're very fortunate to have two outstanding leaders leading these two middle schools. And it's, it's a challenging, complex role, but we appreciate the, the work that you're putting into it for the benefit of our kids and the community. So thank you.
Well said. I'll entertain a motion that the committee votes to approve the school improvement plans for Oak and Sherwood Middle Schools.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Very much.
The next item on our agenda is an update on our SHHS Athletic Field Project. Of course, yesterday, we had a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony. We'll hear from Mr. Patrick Collins, who's going to provide us an update on the turf field. Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palich. So this is a fairly brief update, but I did want to emphasize that this is both a turf and track project, as well as, you know, that our track surface is the original surface from opening that school in 2002 and in much need of repair. So that will be done as well. And here are some photos, fresh off the digital cameras of yesterday. And so it really was a nice event that both Kathleen Cohen and Michelle Biscotti were able to arrange for us. And it was really an all-call to all of the donors, both corporate sponsors, individual donors. And so we had a nice group there, of course, State Senator Michael Moore, who was here this evening, State Representative Hannah Kane. We had the fundraising committee for the turf project, representatives from the Parks and Recreation Department, you know, a major donor, some of our major donors, Central One Federal Credit Union on the left here, David Kaiser there in the middle with the school committee, and then Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union on the right. And we had several other, even individual donors, you know, like Mark Murray, of course, longtime school committee member and had several of his children in the track program joined us as well. So that was nice. So we had a big array of folks and took some nice photos before the heavy equipment showed up. So thanks to all who came. What I do want to cover just briefly is a little bit more about the procurement process that we recently completed, a little bit about the construction schedule, some short-term impacts, and a quick fundraising update. And so, as you're well aware, but the community may not be, that this project did have to adhere to all state procurement laws. And so it's a little bit more bureaucratic, a little bit more process-oriented. But we completed that, and we did receive four bids for the general construction project, and they ranged from just over 1.1 million to 1.4 million dollars for the earth-moving irrigation aspects of this project and track resurfacing. And the bid was awarded to the lowest responsive bidder there, which was RAD Sports or Rad Sports out of Rockland, Mass. And they happen to specialize in this kind of athletic field work. So we're very happy to have them on board. And then with respect to the synthetic turf product and installation, we went through purchasing consortium, and we entertained two proposals, one from Field Turf and the second from Shaw Sports. And we selected the Field Turf product. That's a $562,000 contract. So those are the folks that actually bring the turf carpet, stitch it into place, and then apply the infill or ballast to, on, on top of the carpet, and then also train us on how to maintain it. And then they also will coordinate GMAX or shock absorbs and testing to make sure it's a safe service, safe service for our athletes. So that's the procurement piece. Construction schedule, so officially, it started this Monday. Rad Sports did bring a couple pieces of equipment up to the high school. They're just mobilizing right now. They haven't really started any earth-moving. We expect that maybe later this week, but definitely by next week, we should see some dirt flying there. And the scheduled completion date is September 8th. We will have ongoing construction supervision provided by Gale Associates, who's been our consultant from the outset and drew up the plans and specifications. And so we'll have a weekly job meeting on site, and they will monitor all of the work done by both contractors and review all their submittals for equipment and alike. So the general scheme is, as you can see here, is lots of earthwork early on, and then installing the drainage and rerouting the irrigation system for the lower field hockey and lacrosse field. So now that currently runs underneath the stadium field. And so, of course, we have to reroute it so it goes around in case it ever needs any kind of repair or maintenance. So that's the rerouting of the irrigation system. But of course, we don't need an irrigation system for the stadium field, although we will have hoses, for lack of a better term, or spray nozzles in the event of extreme heat that we can cool down our stadium field if needed. After that, they'll be installing the goalposts, the shock pad, the turf carpet itself, again, conducting the GMAX testing. And then when all that work is done, they will then resurface the track and repair the fencing, and then provide us the maintenance equipment and conduct maintenance training. And then finally, a new scoreboard, which will be separately contracted for. Some of the short-term impacts, we've been trying to do as much communication on this topic as we can, which is that the, that complex, with the exception of the baseball field, that complex is effectively closed as of now. So we know that community members, you know, use it casually, either on the weekends or what have you, to go work out on the track, or walk, or use the tennis courts, or outdoor basketball courts. All those facilities are now no longer available to the community. All those facilities are now no longer available to the community for the entire summer. The basketball courts and tennis courts have actually been physically locked up and that whole stadium area will also be locked up each evening as well and not accessible by the community. So I wanted to make mention that here. It's been sent out to the community bulletin. We're communicating to high school students and trying to alert folks in advance as much as we can. Quick fundraising update, again, we are very grateful we were able to raise just over 1.9 million dollars altogether. And both Kathleen, Cohane, and Michelle Biscotti have worked to reopen one final, final time for brick sales. So if you go to the website now and click that red brick on the turfershewsbury.org website, if folks still do want to get involved in this, we, I think it's close to 500 bricks have been sold to date. And so they will be laid out in some fashion up, right up there at the stadium for all to see and commemorate loved ones or, you know, your children who might have been high school athletes. And so you'll have to the 15th of June to do that. Then we absolutely have to close it so that we can get the bricks delivered and installed. So buy your bricks. And then finally, you know, we are planning a grand opening celebration. We'll be contingent upon the actual completion date of all the work. We're thinking it's likely going to be September home football game, that we will have a grand opening celebration and more formally recognize, more formally than the groundbreaking, more formally recognize all of our donors and major sponsors. So we're going to put our energies towards that event and I think it'll be quite a celebration when we get there. So that's just a brief update on that project. I'm happy to respond to any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, comments or questions? Mrs. Fritz.
Anything for anybody watching, if you can explain the funding for the track component of that, how, how that is different from this stadium project?
Sure. So a couple town meetings ago now, I think it was probably three town meetings ago now, there was some monies appropriated by town meeting to resurface the track. And with this project kind of in the wings, that those funds were not spent, but rather just set aside and held aside because we were anticipating doing some improvements there. It didn't really make sense to resurface the track and then subsequently go in and do a turf field. So altogether between the town appropriation and some high school building project funds that were residual, that's provided $285,000 to support the track resurfacing.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
I will just comment, thank you to you for, of course, all the work you put into this project. It's, it's really rewarding to see it finally turn into a reality. But of course, just another opportunity to say thank you to the donors throughout the community who made this happen. Obviously, this project would not be possible without their generosity. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. And let me emphasize again, Mr. Collins has done excellent work on a very condensed timeline because we were really at the cusp of having to wait another season until the following summer to be able to do this. But we didn't, we're able to get some substantial gifts, as you know, and we were able to make it all fall into place. But that couldn't have happened without a lot of work on Mr. Collins' part and his team. And we will certainly be planning a special celebration when the facility opens in the fall to make sure we thank everyone appropriately. But we're off to a good start and looking forward to the project going well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report with regard to the Assabett Valley Collaborative. The state law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to members, to member school districts. This is our third.
Thank you. And as the committee knows, this is because of the law, this is a pro forma piece that there's a variety of reports that have to happen during the year. There is an approved amended agreement that you voted to approve last year with the collaborative. It's a very formal document that is ultimately approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And although, and that happened, things were delayed a little bit with the passing of Commissioner Chester and the interim situation there. But it has been approved by the commissioner and the major change. And the reason there was a, a new agreement is that the Auburn Public Schools became the newest member of the collaborative and they are now will be an official voting member as of July 1st. The documentation needed to be essentially in a public meeting record and so that's in your materials. We're pleased that Auburn's joined. Dr. Brunel, the superintendent there, has expressed her appreciation for being part of the collaborative. And it's a sign of a healthy collaborative when you have districts seeking you out and wanting to join because of the services and the opportunities available. And so we continue to grow and that's, that's a good thing for the collaborative itself and it's a good thing for our district. But be happy to take any questions the committee has about the amended agreement.
Colleagues, questions, comments?
None. Excellent. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is an item under new business, which is the superintendent's contract. The school committee has negotiated an executive session with the superintendent with regard to an updated contract and we have arrived at a tentative agreement. A vote of the school committee is required at our meeting tonight to authorize Mia's chair to approve an updated employment agreement with the superintendent. The updated contract will be for five years, from July 1 of this year to June 30th, 2023, and will include a 2% salary increase to $194,360 and various other updated terms as negotiated. Members, is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion that the committee votes to authorize the chair to execute an updated employment agreement between the school committee and Dr. Joseph M. Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, for a period commencing July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023, which will include a 2% salary increase to $194,360 and other updated terms as negotiated.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. These are the minutes of our meeting on May 16th. And my apologies to Mrs. Fritz because I did catch a small typo and failed to notify her. Under public participation, right at the end, the word "two" is used twice. So when we vote, I would vote that we, I would, when we vote, I would ask that we accept these minutes as amended. Are there any further questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that we accept the minutes of our May 16th, 2018 school committee meeting as amended, striking the superfluous word "two" under public participation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We do need to go into, was there another set of minutes or just that? Just that, there we go. We do know, need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of approving executive session minutes and for the purpose of negotiations with non-represented employees. I would entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes and for the purpose of negotiations with non-represented employees where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and reconvene to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, this motion requiring a roll call vote. Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Wensky.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano.
Aye.
Mr. Pallach.
Aye.
Thank you.